All right, let's get going here. Everybody, welcome to our regular city council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. It is six o'clock and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, you want to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take role for us? Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Eric Helverson.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Paul Mayo. Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
So you can't get him?
Oh.
Yeah, Henry is here.
Okay.
Yep.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
All right, so we're having a little bit of problems with our AV system. So Henry is in attendance, but the only one that can see him is Aaron. Lucky Aaron. So he's gonna make little hand signals for his motions and stuff like that. But I can see him too, actually, in the corner of my eye there. Barb, you want to introduce, start the introductions of the department heads?
Barb Noah, city clerk.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Jared Kivela, community and economic development director.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of public works.
Laura Colbert, parks and rec director.
Brian Hozell, chief of police.
And of course Josh is here with us too. He's in the back room running the cameras. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We would take this with one motion unless you see an item on the consent agenda that you would like moved to the regular agenda. If that's the case, then let me know right now. Otherwise, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, regular agenda, no additions to the agenda. So again, we would just need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nagel, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under announcements and correspondence, we have a, in your packet you will see a proclamation which is on page 28. Sorry, I gotta, but there is a proclamation in there. It's, has to do with White King's Safety Day. That's for your reading and we will place that on file. Next up then, we have a presentation or certificate of appreciation to Eric Johnson for his 10 years of service to the city of Wapaka. He's, was working at the wastewater treatment plant. I guess he's doing that and he's also the new facilities superintendent. So Eric, come on up, Justin. Yeah, thank you. You didn't have to get all cleaned up for that.
I know.
Speech?
I didn't prepare one, but appreciate for 10 years doesn't seem like 10 years, so must not be too bad, I guess. Been great though. You were going to, 15, 20.
There you go. Thank you. Justin, you are here. Okay, we also have one for Cody Bank for his 10 years of service. He's not here tonight, but here's his certificate. Yeah, thank you, Justin. And then we also have, I'm gonna mispronounce this, but oh, Laura Genisek, who's five years in the library. Eric, you want to make sure that she gets that?
Will do. It sounds like it's, needs a signature yet, if I remember from?
No, no, he popped in and he signed.
Excellent, nailed it.
Yeah.
Quick message from Laura, who couldn't be here this evening. She wanted me to relay that it has been a pleasure and honor working at the library and for the city of Wapaka, working directly with our patrons. Has been a terrific way to join the community. I witnessed Wapaka grow in leaps and bounds into a welcoming, vibrant place to live, work, and play. I'll be sure she gets that.
All right, well, thank you. Tell her I spelled her, or pronounced her name properly too.
Nailed it.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's see. Next up, public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there is anybody that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda tonight, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Paul Hagan.
I came across this article about the 10 ideal Wisconsin destinations for a three-day weekend in 2024. And I'd just like to take a moment of the council's time just to read the short description that they wrote about us. We were number 10, but we made the list. This precious gem in the chain of lakes region is one of the most toured destinations in the Midwest. Travelers enjoy Wapaka's relaxed atmosphere, which sets the mood for a remarkable vacation. Wapaka's outdoor scenery invites endless exploration of parklands and other plush nature spots. Hartman's Creek State Park is an excellent example, spoiling visitors with countless opportunities, from hiking to skiing to mountain biking. First timers will also love the dining culture in Wapaka and jump at the chance to sample some local flavors at Clearwater Harbor Waterfront Restaurant and Bar. Meanwhile, historically inclined tourists should consider touring the Hutchinson House Museum to explore Victorian-era Wapaka by exploring period artifacts. Finally, finish off the day by staying at the Econo Lodge in Wapaka. So it's just interesting to see what, what other people think of us and that at times you come across things to realize that we are actually doing it right. Especially the Econo Lodge.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate you finding that and reading it. Any other public input tonight? Any other public input? All right, let's go ahead and go to unfinished business. This is ordinance number 13-2024. It's an ordinance repealing and recreating section 12.26 of the weights and measures program. This is the second reading. You can find that on page 29 through 36. Barb, was there anything that came up since the last meeting about this ordinance that we should know about?
Nope, I didn't hear anything from anyone.
Okay. So this is just adjusting the fees and so forth on there. We would need a motion to approve that ordinance. Are you okay with it?
Move to approve ordinance 1324.
Second.
Motion by Nagel, second by Olson, that we approve ordinance 13-2024. Any, any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
He has an aye.
Nine.
Technically, he has two ayes.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Ah, sorry. Next up, we have ordinance, I'll just stick to business here. Ordinance number 12-2024. This is an ordinance amending chapter 18A of the city of Wapaka Parks and Recreation Areas. Second reading. Laura, this is one that you brought forward, or?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. And we're okay? Nothing, nobody brought anything up that we need to be concerned about or discuss?
No, I've heard nothing.
Okay. So again, we'd be just looking for a motion to approve this ordinance.
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number 12-2024. This is an ordinance amending chapter 18A of the city of Wapaka Parks and Recreation Areas. Any discussion? If not, Barbara, call the roll.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Another aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, on page 43, this is license report 1693. 1691, I'm sorry. 1691, this is the operator's license or bartender's license as they're truly are. So we're looking for a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve license report number 1691. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under communications recommendations of the mayor, don't forget that we do have a committee of the whole meeting after this meeting tonight. So, you know, we'll take a couple of minutes for Aaron to get ready and then we'll, and then we'll go forward with that. I do know that Jarrett would like to say something to the council tonight. So Jarrett, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Senator, the podium, make it official. Thank you for putting me on the agenda, mayor. Good evening, city council and members of staff. I will keep this short and I typed it out, so I wouldn't ramble. But I want to take a moment to say thank you as I step away from my role as community and economic development director here for the city. It has been a wonderful experience with all of you. Throughout the years that I've been here, we've made a lot of great progress and done a lot of great things. Housing development, planning projects, you know, here during the downtown revitalization efforts and those grants that all happened. You know, the opportunity to better connect with our residents and business owners and watch them grow and expand. So all of that has been absolutely fantastic. I'm also grateful for the support that you guys have given me throughout the years. Your encouragement and your assistance throughout this time has made a big difference in my work and also just how I've grown. So thank you very much for that. I'd also like to thank the support of the entire Wapaka team and my community development staff. They've all been tremendous and I'm thankful to have each and every one of them by my side through my time here. I hope that I was able to lead and teach, just as everyone here has been able to lead and teach me to where I am today. So thank you for trusting me, working with me, and always caring about the community of Wapaka. This community really knows, I'll take a piece of your heart. I think Andrew Dane had made a comment similar when I first got here, that it grabs a hold of you and it doesn't really like to let go. So I soon learned that very quickly. But it's been an honor to serve the community and I know with all of current staff and elected officials leading the way, Wapaka will continue to have a bright future. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jarrett. Yeah, good luck to you, future. All right, any other business for council tonight? Besides the committee of the whole, of course, after this. We're looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. That little speech of yours cost me the record.
Paul Mayo may have slipped me a 20.
All right. Next up, we have the committee of the whole. Are you ready to go or you want to take a couple of minutes?
I'm ready to roll.
Okay, you're gonna do it right here?
Yeah, and I'll have to talk through it and I'll have to ask city council to bring up the committee of the whole packet on your iPads.
Yeah, so these, these TVs are not gonna be working for us tonight. So, yeah, if you're not, if this doesn't have anything to do with you, department heads, you can, obviously, you can leave. Yep, you can too. I don't think it's gonna be controversial. Uh, well, I don't know. Yeah, you can too. Stephanie and Justin and, no, Stephanie, you have to stay.
Stephanie has to stay.
And Justin and Aaron need to stay. And Barb, sorry. Eric, you can go too, if you want. You can stay too. All right, we have a committee of the whole meeting. We do have an agenda. Same individual, same council members are in attendance. The only one that's not here tonight is Paul Mayo. So we do have a quorum and you do have an agenda, although it's just got the one line item on there dealing with the utility, the water sewer and the Wapaka online budgets for 2025. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda, second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hagan, that we approve the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, let's step right into the fiscal 2025 budget worksheet. Your brewers are down eight to four, as we discuss right now.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, Aaron, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith, city council members. I am on page two of the committee of the whole packet. You'll find a memo that summarizes what we're looking at here and the water utility, the sewer utility, and the Wapaka online funds. I was looking back into last year's budget workshops, actually the last couple, I noticed that we had really talked about the utilities more during the first draft of the overall budget. So this is actually the first time we've had a specific utility workshop in a little bit. But it gives us an opportunity to look into these, the state of them, what it looks like for 2025 in a little more detail and on a separate night. So first thing that is on my memo on page two, I just noted some of the operational expenses that will, are expected and forecasted to increase. You can see there, first is the water, the personnel-related expenses. That's approximately $27,000 we're expecting to increase in 2025. That's not just who you would think of as like the sewer operators. That also is some of the wages that get charged off from administration or Stephanie in finance and Kate in finance. There are some percentages that are taken from various departments that assist the sewer that also play into that $27,000. You heard during our personnel workshop, Justin, talk about a captive pay conversation that's happening. I want you to know that that's also in that $27,000 and it's also in the budget worksheets and the summaries that you see attached. You'll see, the only different one here is you kind of, if you're looking ahead, you'll see rent to the general fund. And again, this is something we have talked about, but this is an increase of $25,000 in rent to the general fund because, because we did not take water, or water revenue bonds to pay for their portion of the public works facility. So they will be a renter in that facility for the years to come. I say an increase of $25,000. As a reminder, the total rent cost is based off of $10 per square foot and that's about $50,000, or it is $50,000 per year that the water utility pays the general fund. Notable increases in the sewer. Personnel-related expenses you'll see is very, very similar in that $27,000. That again, has the exact explanation I had for the water. So charging off some administration, some finance, and some street assistance there, as well as the captive pay conversation that Justin has alluded to. And then the notable increased expenses in Wapaka online, you'll see there, it's, Wapaka online is a much smaller fund. You'll see less detail in here. Josh and Ralph and that whole team have done a fantastic job at growing the revenues in there and making that a very self-sustaining fund. But you'll see personnel-related expenses there are expected to increase about $4,700. All three utilities wanted to take this information and communicate it. What do they have in fund balance or unrestricted cash? And you can see there, the water fund has just over $1 million and then the equivalent to about 268 days of operation on hand. Sewer is over $3 million, 506 days of operation on hand. And then Wapaka online, 257,000. And that equates to about 339 days of operational funding. There are no policies on this and actually, most communities do not have policies, specific policies for water, sewer, unrestricted cash. And that's just because of a variety of ways that municipalities use this and they want to remain flexible in that area. However, there are some that do have policies and I will tell you that in speaking with our auditor, the policies that he does see is usually around 180 days, just for some perspective on what those numbers mean. So in very good shape for all of those. Expenditures tied to services, materials, and supplies across the three funds really are expected to stay pretty flat. This is not really different than all of our other, or most of our other departments within the general fund. The department has to do a great job at controlling costs whenever possible. There may be some slight expense increases in some of the new technology we're looking at for Wapaka online, but Josh feels like that'll be covered within the budget he has submitted. That is, I'm referring to Wi-Fi 6, it's called, and it's some equipment that they're starting to explore and play with and actually have installed some things on some of the towers that have really increased speeds and just reliability for some of our Wapaka online users. Revenues, the water utility. So this is something we've talked about really in the last several months. We are recommending a simplified rate case application. This is something we did two years ago. The simplified rate case is a way to increase the water rates. And the reason we're doing this is because this year we're very, very close to that 1.1 coverage of our debt service coverage. Now, we will, we're trending in the right direction. We expect that to go up. However, just to keep up with inflationary pressures and costs, the water utility is, we feel like is in need of going through that simplified rate case. That would increase our revenue by about $60,000 and that is a 4.1% increase right now. That increase is determined and preset by the PSC or the Public Service Commission. So if we said, hey, we want to do it 2%, we can't do that. The PSC determines that and as of today, that's 4.1. We're thinking that would go into effect in January is what we're recommending. Is it possible that the PSC changes that number between now and January? And all of a sudden, if it does change, it's likely to come backwards, given what CPI is doing. It is possible, but as of today, that's 4.1%. We have confirmed that we are eligible for that. At some point, just another note, we will run out of eligibility for that. You can only do so many times, or actually, I think you can only increase it by 40% since your last full rate case. We haven't had a full rate case and, oh, I should, I should have this, but I don't want to guess at it. It's been a long time. But we are still eligible. I would anticipate in the next five years or so that we might have to go through that full rate case. The sewer utility, this is different than what we talked about even early on in this budget process. I had mentioned that we would, we would not be recommending a sewer rate increase. And we've had some things changed in the last couple, actually, just the last month, three weeks to a month. And that's largely the cost of the Bowlby lift station project, which is our large capital item. The costs on that have come in much higher than we projected originally, which means that our debt service payments and our debt service obligations, maybe not this year, but in a few years down the road, will grow at a rate that we, more than we were thinking. And what that does in 2028 through 2030, that puts our sewer debt service coverage ratio at about 1.26. So we talk about that 1.1 number. Our sewer hasn't been real close to that 1.1 number, at least since I've been here and probably long before that, which is why we haven't had, haven't had increases since 2014. However, that 1.26 is getting down there and just to be proactive and stick, stay up with inflation and cover costs and prepare for that, we are recommending a 3% increase. If I had the screens on, I have a sheet that I would show you exactly what those projections look like. Because I can't show you, I will send it to you in an email after this meeting and I will also have it posted on the city's webpage where these are uploaded. Let's, so I do have listed here too, a summary of our capital projects. I believe, Justin, remind me, we went through these capital projects in the capital workshop, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we probably don't need to go through each one of them again, but can you just kind of explain the Bowlby lift station, since that one is kind of the impactful one that has changed some things here?
Bowlby Lift is a key lift station in our sewer collection system. It is just south of Neville and it serves everything west of that of the city, including receiving sewage from two other lift stations. It is, we're having quite a few issues with it, or we have for a long time and it's time for upgrade. The wet well, which is the well that holds the water, is way too small and our pumps are having a hard time keeping up. So we need to upgrade that. It also affects the water utility, not because of lift station, but because we want to loop a water main on Bailey/Smith Street. There is no water main back there. So while we do these improvements, we're also gonna be extending some utilities, like I said, water main, but then also a little bit of gravity sewer, but then the main chunk of it is replacing the lift station itself.
Okay, anyone have any questions on that project? If not, I'll kind of move along to the alloc, how are we paying for these capital projects within the water fund? And this is some good news. So this year, we are able to not go out to borrow. Originally, so in the past years, we've used water revenue bonds. Because our GO borrow and we've gained capacity earlier this budget process, we were thinking, well, instead of borrowing through water revenue bonds, let's borrow through GO and then have the water utility pay off that portion of the GO bonds. The reason we would have done that is because our GO bonds are rated, we get better rates, we had capacity, it all made sense. Well, as we started to continue to, as we continued to work through our budget worksheets and our projections, we realized that if we, we can pay back the water utility fund quicker, which it is required that we pay that back through the PSC. So TIF 8 will be making large transfers to the water utility and there's really no sense in borrowing. And we had this conversation with RW Baird, when we have these large transfers coming in that can cover these capital projects. So that really helps that debt service coverage ratio as we look into like year two, three, four, five. You'll see that when I send it out, but that is very helpful. So we're able to take, and I do have, I put the wrong years in here on the memo. So if you're looking on page four of the memo, I have TIF 8 transfers in 2025 and 26. That should say TIF 8 transfers in 2024 and 25. So we're gonna make a large transfer of $1 million this year in 2024 and then we're gonna make one in 2025. So $2 million total that the water revenue fund, or the water fund will get back from TIF 8. So $2 million total that the water revenue fund or the water fund will get back from TIF eight. In those years, and you can see on that memo how that's going to be allocated. So 1.327 of that is going to go to pay for the 2025, 2026 water capital projects. No borrowing has to happen. It's also going to pay for the waters portion of the 2023 note anticipation note, which would have otherwise been converted to a GO bond this next year. So that helps the water immensely. And then also, you know, we still have $673,000 left and that will go to our cash reserves. For the water fund, excuse me. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Colin.
Is there, I guess there's a couple of questions. Is there some sort of a balance sheet for the water utility? And if so, it's is within that, is there a line item that says how much TIF eight owes to the water utility? Or is, and then beyond that, the money that we're transferring, is that under this utility worksheet that you have as miscellaneous revenue? Is it revenue? And I would think that that'd just be, I don't know what it, it doesn't seem like revenue to me. You're not earning any funds.
Welcome to government accounting. Anytime it's transferred, it's counted as revenue.
Yes, great question and great comment. Just when you think you figure out accounting for the general fund, then you go to the utility funds and accounting is done on a whole different basis.
Okay.
So the difference with the utility funds is for some reason we do count, we do count like our capital outlays in here, our borrowing money. That's all shown in these budget worksheets. So to your point, yes, the miscellaneous revenue does have some of that, that $1 million for 2025. So that's reflected in there. To the balance sheet, yes, every year in our audit, you can find that. I don't know the exact number, but I know it's 2.9, it's between 2.9 million and 3 million is what TIF eight owes the water utility. Which means that if you look to 2026, the balance of that will be paid off in 2026. So that'd be that 900 and some thousand dollars.
Interesting. Does the sewer also owe or does TIF eight also owe the sewer?
It does, and I'll get to that in just a second. Yeah.
I think that Colin, to make it easier, just to understand why they do it that way. Is that it, this, the financial statement then kind of shows a cash flow. Instead of, you know, on a cruel basis, it's whatever you're seeing is actually cash in, cash out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll let the accountant explain that one. Okay. So moving on to, okay, that's, so that's the plan for funding the water capital projects. Moving on to the sewer and the plan for, for paying for that. Now this is, would be all funded 3.518 million would be all funded through sewer revenue bonds. And this would be a two year borrow. So that 3.5 million would be over 2025 and 2026. So it followed the same schedule as our GO. Cause it's a larger amount, we are going to do it through the sewer revenue bonds and not do it through GO. We did have a conversation with Baird to say, should we, should we take some of what TIF eight also owes the sewer fund? And should we start prepaying some of that back now to buy down this large amount? And after conversations, they recommended, you know what, no, you're in good position to handle this at this time. Let's continue to plan on getting those amounts after we pay back the water, which is required by the PSC. Which means that we will start paying back the sewer fund, which will help future capital borrows be less or none. And that, that payback will start coming in increments of between 500 and $600,000, starting in 2027. Is how that looks. So, so long story short, for 2025 and 2026, that would be funded through the sewer revenue bonds. Any questions on that? We'll pack online, that is, rates are recommended to stay the same. Again, this is a much smaller fund, but Josh is not, Josh and Ralph are not recommending any rate changes for OPEC online. Now I do have in here and we just spoke this morning about something that's a little different. It says there are no projected capital expenditures that need to be funded outside the OPEC online operational budget. That may not be true. They're having some problems per a conversation this morning with their OPEC online vehicle. They are very well equipped to handle a purchase out of the reserves that they have. We talked about how much cash they have on hand and they're in good position to do that. But that may be something that comes forward in the near future. Again, that would have to be a council action to approve that. So just so you're aware that there may be a replacement of that vehicle. And then I just in conclusion, you know, all three of these utilities are really actually looking very, very good financially. And you know, some of the, the good thing is, is that these increases are really to try to be proactive and continue to keep up with costs. So that we're not looking in two or three years down the road and saying, hey, we have to, we're recommending specifically a sewer increase of, you know, six, seven, eight, nine percent. So trying to do it incrementally to avoid kind of some of what we had in the debt service fund a year ago. So. I know this is hard to do guys without kind of having the stuff on, so I apologize for that. But are there any questions that I can ask on this or any of the attached budget summaries that you see?
Aaron?
Yeah.
Does TIF eight pay interest to the money that was transferred to it from the water fund?
That's, that's a great question. No, it's not. No.
The, it is a good question. It's not required, they're not required to pay interest on it. And as you know, TIF eight was struggling TIF as it was. So we did not apply interest to it. I don't even know if we can go back and do it now because we didn't have that as part of the agreement when we, when the general fund lent the money to the TIF eight. I don't know that it had an interest in bone on there. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But I mean, it may be something we could take a look at, see if there's some accrued interest that could be paid. It's not a bad thing.
It would be an advantage to the city, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll check.
Although. Yeah, it would. We're not sure though, or, or maybe these new projections, Aaron, I guess I haven't asked you since then, but we're not sure by the time TIF six close, is it TIF six? That's paying it or TIF four?
TIF four is paying TIF eight.
Okay, so TIF four, by the time TIF four closes, we're not sure that the sewer is going to be paid back.
Oh.
All of its money anyways.
And it would make, wouldn't make a difference.
Right, right.
Yep. And my gut, yeah, well, I don't mean to speculate, but my guess is if we did have an option to do that, it would be more likely through the sewer, not the water because of the PSC regulations. But, but I'll check on it. Good, good thought.
Well.
I do, before we, I guess close the discussion for tonight, not to close it early if other people have questions. But going back to kind of Colin's conversation or question, and then Mayor Smith's comment and how this is kind of accounted for and how it's different. You know, I'll point out that you'll see a net income in the water utility fund on the bottom of this, of this worksheet that's attached. It says $556,000. If you take out some of those one time expenses or revenues, talking about capital or the payback, that net income is actually about $50,000. Just so you, in case there's a wonder like, why are we suggesting a simplified rate case and a 4.1% increase? If you have $556,000 of net income, well, that would be why. And then the $140,000, because it's a bigger fund in the sewer, that is, again, it's, we're fine for this year. It is more looking forward to those years in which we are projecting running closer to that 1.1. 2028 through 2030. Anyway, those are the last two things, Mayor, that, that I had and happy to answer any questions.
You know, the hard thing to project to, and we'll probably see a little better of that over the next year or two is that we are adding new water customers and new sewer customers. And that will bring in additional revenue. What that number is, we haven't really, we don't have a grasp of that right now. So that could help us in the future so that we don't have to do any rate increases for a while. Depending on the amount of revenue that comes in and hopefully it keeps up or is greater than the expenses increase. So it's a good thing that's happening is that we are getting more users. You know, over the years, we've actually lost like water usage and sewer usage. And now it's going the opposite way just because of, more because of industry, you know, being better at using their water and using their sewer and stuff like that. But those are all pluses too, and we're not, besides what's being paid for by the TIF, we're not having to use the general fund to make a lot of improvements in the water sewer accounts either. So again, that's a big plus for us too. Right?
So these numbers, I get my water bill, utility bill every month from the city. I can expect to see these numbers increasing on that bill, correct?
Correct.
Do we know with GFL, are they projecting some type of increase or are they locked in for?
So that's a separate fund, that's our refuse fund.
But it does end up on our water bill.
Correct, so I guess what I'm trying to.
Oh, yeah.
You know, are we looking at like a 10% increase on a bill? I mean, because that's, you know, at the end of the day, that's what people are going to see. And that, that can be a big number to some people.
Yeah.
For those types of services which are necessary and we, we have to fund those, but.
Yeah, good, good question. Justin, you're actually more familiar with that. I don't have it off the top, I have that contract. What's next year look like for the refuse?
GFL, we have the agreement with GFL goes up 3% every single year. So that has to be, that rate is set by council by resolution. So that I will be bringing that forward in the next couple of months so we can have that in place by January. So, but that is the expectation that refuse fund will go up another 3% or rates, excuse me.
Yeah. So Corey, I think to answer your question, 3%, 3%, 4.1% is the recommendation.
What, what did we, oh, we didn't talk about that. Do, we, we can't really base it on customers. We have to base it on usage, right? When we're dealing with water and sewer would be more.
Um, no, the number of users does help. There is a meter charge every single month. So there's a baseline fee and then after that, you do get charged based on your usage for every thousand gallons. So water, it's depends on how much you use, but typically around $2 and say like 40 cents every thousand gallons. And sewer is $3.69 every thousand gallons.
Yeah, so, and Aaron brought this up too, and I think it was 2000, yeah, it's in here, 2014. So the sewer fund has not gone up since 2014 and, and you're just looking at going up, what did you say, 3 point?
Just 3% for the sewer.
3%. And so it's going up 3% and that's 11 years that we haven't seen an increase. Now, I know we have some council members on here that probably would prefer to see, you know, if you divide that by 10, would have rather have seen maybe like a 0.25% increase every year instead of 3% all in one year. Although 3% is crazy, but it, it does, our expenses are going, are going up obviously. So we're, we're just trying to stay status quo with, with that. But I think with the sewer, it's pretty easy to say, hey, you haven't seen a rate increase since 2014. And it's just to the point where we have a large project coming on, plus we have additional expenses. We had no other choice but to do it. But I get the, the 10% increase. I, I'm trying to, you know, if you take your water and sewer and your garbage on there, let's say it averages 90 bucks. That's, you know, that's another $9 onto your bill per month. So that's $99.
Okay.
I guess going off of that, do you have numbers going forward that you think that you might be bringing to us? Two, three, four years down there? I mean, what can we, what are the projections in terms of percent? I know you said with the simplified rate case, you can only do that so many times. Are there things, are these things that we could, could spread out?
Yeah.
This is just kind of a shorter term snapshot. You know, is this, are we looking at every year raising a sewer and, and doing a simplified rate? I mean, what, what does that look like, I guess?
Yeah, great question. So I'll speak to the water first. Really, really hard to project the, the water, really hard to project the impacts of a full rate case. I mean, that's something that's completely run by the PSC. And when we are triggered to do that, I couldn't even speculate as to what that will look like. As far as, which is why it's the simplified rate case is a good tool when you need to use it. So it, and it depends on, on every year, you know, if we're, if we're at 1.3, 1.4 coverage, you know, I think I would anticipate that our coverage and our projections show, and you'll see this, that our coverage will get better and better. Largely because we're not borrowing in 2000, because we're paying for our 2023 with this transfer. We're not borrowing for the 2025 and 2026. So that will certainly help. So that's trending in a positive direction. It's hard for me to say the recommendation will not be to do a simplify a right case until this time because there's so many unknowns. For the sewer. You know, I think this is, you know, the good thing is, is this, I view this as more of a proactive approach and not a reactionary approach. So I think the, the, the 3% increase at this time is to position ourselves so we don't have to be reactive to something in two years, three years.
Well, the good, the good thing that we've been able to do and Justin continues to do this, as his predecessor did too, is that we have old assets, old water lines, old sewer lines. As we've gone through the, through the city, we've been able to not only make street improvements, because that's what we all see as street and sidewalks and curb. But there's sewer and water that's going in underneath that too. And obviously that costs money to do that too. And we were able to do that by keeping the rates fairly constant. So, I mean, hopefully we could continue to do that, but we're not going to stop doing projects. You have one planned for, what's the one by Plant One?
Elm Street, next year.
Elm Street is going to be in, that's water and sewer, it's going to be redone there.
Yep.
In a couple of years down the line, we're going to have Fulton Street. West Fulton, we all again think of, God, we need to fix that road, but that water and sewer is pretty darn old that's underneath there too. So that needs to be done also.
How much of an impact are the 30 apartments downtown going to be? And then the River North apartments that are going to be online here pretty quick, right? I drove by that today, there's a lot of them out there.
The ones being built right now is 45 and then the other ones will be 124 when they're all done. So yeah, all of that certainly has an impact, hard to project exactly how much. But. much. But yeah, we'll see that help for sure. To go back to Cory's comment, you know, this, this Bowlby lift station from a sewer standpoint is by far the biggest dollar amount item that we have in the next several years. So that helps. Again, also, we have TIF eight that's going to help in a couple, like, in, starting in 2027, it's going to start transferring back. So that helps. The one thing that's so hard to say, to sit here and be like, yeah, I am super confident that there won't be a large increase, because you never know when a regulator comes in and says, you have to do this for PFOS or for phosphorus. And all of a sudden, you have a project that we couldn't have, you know, we didn't have planned. So hard to, hard to say, give you a great answer on that.
That would be a good project for us to do though, Eric, too, is try and calculate what that additional revenue will, that be, that's going to be coming in. And, you know, even though that's in, the, the project out in River North is in TIF 11, that money actually does not stay in the TIF. It actually goes to the utilities too. So that's, that's a good thing. Yeah, I don't know if you could take an average of what each person might use and try and figure out what that, what that would add to our revenue. I think that could be done.
Sure, you came up with something.
Yeah. That would help. Budget time. It's always fun.
Any other questions?
All right. We were looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, I got a double dip here, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at 6:53 PM.